Board of Selectmen's meeting. Would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we begin our meeting, I would like to introduce Mr. Bob Reed to the audience watching. Bob is a interim town administrator, and he's jumped in and working hard. And I would also like to thank Jeanne LeBlanc, who was the interim interim until Bob came on board, and she got help from her assistant, Janay, also. Okay, public service announcements. Ian?
I have none.
Chase?
I have none.
Mary?
No.
Jamie?
And I have none.
Could we please have a moment of silence for all those affected by COVID? Okay, thank you. On the agenda tonight at 6:35, we have a public hearing for change of manager for Old Sturbridge Village, Inc. Action items include consideration and possible appointment of a department head to serve on the ARPA subcommittee, review of debt schedule for the senior center renovation project, old business, new business, correspondence, citizens forum, and then we will adjourn. I don't have quite 6:35, so we have a minute to kill. Does anybody have a bit of old business that would take a minute?
Does anything ever take a minute?
Well, if you put your mind to it.
I know.
Does anyone?
It'd take a minute, probably, no.
Okay, does anybody have any new business that will take a minute or two?
Well, hold on. Not a minute or two, and we're going to return to that, right? I just wanted to return to like a COVID discussion, but that's not going to be a minute or two.
No, it'll be three. Hey, I have the gavel. So, okay, so we'll just breathe for a minute. Michelle, there were no correspondents?
Just something from, I put it on Chase.
Yeah, it was, I'm going to shoot this off. We got a newsletter from the dirt on January 2022, a letter from the president, Josie.
Half a minute.
I have one thing I can pass out to the board for you to review is your yearly, the meeting scheduled for 2022.
I know. No, that'd be good. Okay, I have 6:35. Chase?
All right. Town of Sturbridge Board of Selectmen Public Hearing. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Old Sturbridge, Inc. for a change of manager, change of license manager from Lisa and Ann Hartigan to Michael Edward Heenan. For the premises located at 1 Old Sturbridge Village Road, Sturbridge, Mass. on 1566, with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, in accordance with MGL CH 138, a public hearing will be held on Monday, January 3, 2022, at 6:35 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, second floor Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566, December 23, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Chase. I assume you're Mr. Michael Heenan. Would you please come down? You can sit. Yeah, the microphones are really for the audience watching. Okay, do you want to give us a little background, please?
Michael Heenan, I'm currently the executive chef at Old Sturbridge Village. Been there for approximately three and a half years now, and they're changing manager license to my name for the liquor license.
Okay, any questions from the board? I see you're TIPS certified through Serve Alcohol, Safe Serve Alcohol.
Yes.
Someone want to make a motion, then?
I will move to approve Michael Heenan, if I'm saying that correctly.
Heenan.
Yeah, to be the manager of Old Sturbridge Village for the change liquor license application.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, how are you staffed? I know a lot of restaurants are having trouble with.
It's awful.
It's awful for you as well?
Yes, every restaurant I think is suffering right now with staffing, so hopefully it gets better in the next couple of weeks or months.
You attributing it to the pandemic, that people are afraid to work in a restaurant? I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
Yeah.
Haven't pinpointed it just yet, if it's pandemic related or just change of careers.
Right. Yeah, no, because I know a lot of restaurants, Dunkin' Donuts, they're closing early, and when I ask, they say, because we're not staffed adequately, so I wondered how it was.
Do that, but we're not supposed to do that, so made it through Christmas by candlelight.
Right, which is an amazing event. Yeah, all right, thank you.
My mistake, it was a public hearing, and I noticed we didn't have any public here for input. Is there any public at home that has any input?
Did we open and close the public hearing?
We opened it.
Oh, okay.
Didn't close it because I forgot.
That's okay.
Yeah, I don't see anybody on the line, if I'm operating this correctly.
That's not unusual, Bob.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, we already voted approval, we're just a little backwards tonight. Okay, next on the agenda, we have consideration and possible appointment of a department head to serve on the ARPA subcommittee. We had two department heads who submitted a letter of interest. We have a select person, Mary Dowling, on it, and the interim town administrator will also be on it, so. Ken, your letter just happens to be on top, would you like to come sit down, please? Okay, just for the audience at home, you want to give a little bit about why you're interested in it?
Why am I interested in it? I didn't have my letter with me, I was kind of ambushed on this one. I think the basic part on that was in my letter, in the interest of, the ARPA money was put out there and generated through public health. The reason for the ARPA money across the federal spending package and that was delivered to the states was through public health, and I figured on our side, I can't even say that, my board figured on our side, best way to get best representation was to have us represented on there. I know there are four other areas for spending, but I think that having a health input would be a nice thing to have when we're looking at dispensing funds.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Kim. Robin?
Yeah, ma'am, you got it.
Okay, good evening, Robin.
Good evening.
Okay, do you want to tell us a little bit about why you're interested?
Sure, I haven't been part of the town team too long yet, only two and a half years, but I'd like to jump in, and I think this ARPA opportunity is a good one for me. I have a good view of a lot of the department needs, and although I'm not a town resident, I feel like I could offer some good background and assistance and have some ideas and be able to vet some of the recommendations in a very objectionable way.
Okay, have you seen the list of suggestions from the survey?
I have not. I put in a few suggestions myself, I've seen a couple, or I've heard of other people putting in some suggestions, and I heard the general summary that was given in the meeting the other day, but I've not seen the specific list.
Okay, questions, comments from the board?
I have one. So it seems to me, and I know we have one position, but it seems like these are actually both sort of needs within both of them, because one of them goes to maintenance and facilities work, and Ken's, his mission is kind of different than that, so it seemed like there's probably both being.
I was going to ask.
Let's just expand it.
We're not limited.
So, yeah.
It's going to be my comment as well, Jamie. I mean, you know, health and facilities. I mean, I'm happy to attend and not vote if we have to keep it a five person, but I mean, I think we're going to come forward with a recommendation.
Yeah, no, that would make it five people, including you.
Oh, okay, I thought, oh, we were only four before.
We were only three.
Me, one department head, oh, that would be four, yeah, and even a resident.
No, it makes sense, because, you know, Ken's focus definitely is health, and it's, the ARPA funds are much more.
Broader.
Than that, so.
I mean, they're both troublemakers.
So, it's our committee, so, I mean, there's a general consensus, then we want to.
So that's four.
Up to five. So does somebody want to make a motion, then, to appoint?
Well, I.
That will up it to, I'm sorry, it's me, right now, one department head, and the interim, so that will increase it to four, right?
And then a resident.
Yeah, I was going to say, did we have a resident? No?
No, we didn't. We're going to include somebody.
I think we should.
We didn't get any interest.
Okay.
Well, maybe let's put it out there again. Interested people.
It seems when we call for public support on those things, we have to ask a second time, after people know what we're forming.
Right.
Same with the other boards.
We still wind up with nada.
It would be nice.
The board would like to wait two weeks, we can put it back out, but we have a motion to appoint these two people, so was there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, so, Bob, we can put back up on, or Michelle, whoever posted, a citizen to serve, because we did get a lot of citizen input.
And maybe, Bob, if you could reach out directly to committee, people who are already sitting on committees, because they tend to be the more active residents in town, and maybe somebody sitting on another committee, you know, whether it's, I don't know.
Well, Jeanne had sent out.
Did she, to planning and conservation and everybody?
We can do it again.
Yeah, okay.
It hurts to ask, we just don't.
Now we're trying for advice to spend money, I would think people would want to get behind that.
But people have the misconception that we have more money than we do.
Yeah.
Because, well, we, over 600,000 of it's going to replace what we used for budget, so. Because some of the requests on the survey were like $5 million for underground lives.
I was gonna, I don't know, can I just bring something up, because we're talking about it, and we have people here, because I don't want to wait too long on this, but I was going to make a suggestion that, I know five days ago, the Polito, the Baker-Polito administration released, you know, a news report that they have contracted with vendors for town, well, first of all, they gave free rapid tests to, like, socio-economic disadvantaged towns and cities to disperse to their residents, and I'm assuming that Sturbridge was not.
No, Sturbridge didn't.
Correct, right, but then as a second follow-up, they contracted with vendors for towns to be able to purchase rapid tests for their residents at a discounted price, and I would like to, for us to discuss, maybe under old business, whether we as a town want to purchase some rapid tests, you know, amount to be determined at that discounted price that's being offered, so we can offer them for free to as many rapid tests that we're able to buy. I mean, I know they're very hard to come by, and some people may not be able to shell out the $20, well, they're anywhere from 14 to 25, from what I've seen, but they sell out at, you know, Walgreens and CVS and Walmart very quickly, so if we were able to buy, I don't know how many we could, but it seems to me that we should take advantage of this discounted vendor rate that the state government has contracted with. They announced it like five days ago, and they said, I forgot how many were committed, a few million, I want to say, but I don't remember, but they urged towns who were interested to like start the process.
Ken, would that be anything the health board would be interested in delving into?
I don't know if I can vouch on whether we're interested in bringing in testing, I can't say it would, it can't hurt, but it's, I guess, the distribution of it, how we did implement it would be the first part of it. The towns that I have talked to that they received a test the first time around were pretty inundated for those couple of weeks that they had tests available, so that was a full-time job for them.
Well, this isn't two tests, this is just to hand out.
I know, but.
The rapid tests to do at home, the home kits.
Correct.
I mean, I would volunteer my time, if that's our only problem, like, coming up with time to hand them all.
We could get it out either through this or public safety, or at the senior center, there's plenty of tests to get them out to.
Right.
The first round was given out to the demographics that they chose, and Southbridge received it, and we didn't.
Right.
We were inundated for a solid week in our office, and I think for about an hour a week downstairs and through the senior center with phone calls, people looking for them, so there was definitely an interest and a need from the citizens, so I know how to get them. I didn't ask for coming to ask for anything, because we didn't have the money for the girl, I'm still, I just got the nursing money, so if I had a choice on stuff, I'd rather have the money for nurses than.
Yeah, the testing.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't think it's an even, or, I just found the press release. I mean, these tests don't cost, I mean, I think that's, I don't think we'd have to give up the nursing request with 600,000.
Although we already proved that.
Right, these contracts built on an announcement, okay, hold on. The contracts signed today are another tool to support eligible organizations and entities to receive COVID-19 at-home rapid antigen tests. Three manufacturers have been awarded these contracts, they go over the three, additional manufacturers are expected, and they're kind of urging, you know, towns who are, municipalities are eligible to utilize ARPA funds to purchase these test kits. Because they were inundated, I think that's something that we could do for our residents, whether, even if we only purchase a few hundred, the people who want them should be able to have them, I don't, you know.
Okay, Bob, can you look into how much it would cost? Are we eligible to get it, because it sounds like.
No, we're, this is for everybody.
Yeah.
The free ones.
Robin?
I've been inundated with emails from vendors this week, $9 per test.
At the discounted rate?
Yes.
Yeah, who is eligible? Cities, towns, districts, counties, and other political subdivisions? There's no, there's no poverty level requirement associated with these, because we're purchasing them.
It's just a show of money.
Yeah, I know that for, I know that for Mary.
You know, naturally, we'd have to see what the source of money would be. $9 a test, that's not really.
Yeah, $2,700 per case.
Yeah.
You know, that's not cost prohibited, as far as I'm concerned.
No, but it's not a great discount, you can buy a package of two for.
I know, but.
Oh, anyways, Bob's going to check into it.
Yeah, but I don't think resident, you know, I don't, I think some, I don't think residents who need it should have to pay it if they don't have to. We're kind of leaving it up to their discretion, you know, like, if I can go into a CVS and buy several, I'm not going to take advantage of the town and go it, so it's a little bit of the honor system, but, you know, you buy as many as you can, and you say they're available at the senior center, and, you know, various locations, and it's kind of first come, first served, but I just think it's a good thing for us to do for residents, especially when they were inundated with phone calls. I know, I have friends that are just saying, do you have a test? Do you have a test? Do you have a test? And I just think it would be nice for us to be.
Yeah, Bob will check into it if it's feasible.
There was a notice that came out from the Division of Local Services, there was another one that came out today, and we can see about at least getting a place in line. I would imagine this would be pretty popular.
Right.
If you can at least get a place in line, so when we decide how much the town wants to spend, then we'll have our spot.
Yeah, and they're saying that some of these are starting as low as $5. I don't know where you, I'm sure you've got the $9 quote, but five, anywhere up to 25, which is actually more than what you can get in the stores, so.
Okay, Bob will check.
Okay, nice, thank you.
Feasible.
I can talk to you, I've got a 3 o'clock call, our regional call tomorrow, so I'd like, they canceled last week because of the CDC change, so I might have more information when they're done with that tomorrow, so I'll get them all when they're done with that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a review of the debt schedule for the senior center renovation project, and this will also need to be posted, Michelle, because we need to get the information out to people, because there's always questions about, how is it going to affect my taxes? And the chart that Bob had put together is quite clear. It really doesn't impact until fiscal year 2025, and at that, the median house would have an impact of $229.96, and then after that, it goes down approximately $4 and something, and then eventually, the last payment in 2045 would be $139.16. However, these numbers change for different variables, bond rating, percentages, and everything, but people like to know that, and that is the median house, which means there's as many houses over that as under it, and the house valuation she used was the $341,829. Okay, did the board have any question on that chart or anything?
No, maybe, Mary, do you just want to, for the people watching, just read the third paragraph on the memo, because that's kind of clear, and people can kind of know.
That's, based on the attached schedule and the median home value of $341,829, the increase to the average home tax bill would be $1.77 in fiscal year '23, $14.15 in fiscal year '24, $73.42 in fiscal year '25, and then, once the project is totally bonded, $229.93 in fiscal year '26. The annual debt payments then begin to decline slightly. That's where I said approximately $4 and some cents for the full life of the bond, which will be 20 years. So, you can get that up, yeah, in the whole chart, too.
And that would be included in the information we make available to people the day of the vote as well, when they come in to vote on it?
I'm not sure.
You should.
I mean, it's the most information you can get to people about how it's going to affect their tax bill, right?
Well, that's.
Voting on, so.
I know, I mean, the $11 million approximately.
Yeah.
I mean, it's fairly easy to post this.
I think it's good to break it down for people, because, I mean, even me, before I got involved with this, I'd have just looked at it as the whole amount, and when you look at it like this, it doesn't seem as bad.
We can have that information available.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah.
Double-check on that, as you know, you can't take a position.
You can't, politics.
But these numbers aren't biased.
No, just put the memo right up when people go in to vote, just to see with the thing, how will this impact how tax, that's what I mean.
Put it right out there, but, yeah, because the, more the people know, the better they'll vote, hopefully. Depends on how you want them to vote. Okay, does anybody else have anything else on that? Okay, we did old business, new business, Mary, you wanted to go back to?
Oh, is this new?
I have a quick old business.
Okay, Chase, go ahead.
I forgot about it earlier. The Town Administrator Search Committee for the Residents. We have a deadline of the 9th.
7th, I think.
The 7th, are we going to interview at our, are we going to interview them like we did last time, or?
Well, I was going to ask the board that, under the new business. We have our choice of interviewing, or just going by what they send in. As of now, we have five candidates. We only need three, so it's up to the board. Do you want to interview? We can set up a special meeting for that. We've done that in the past.
Who are the candidates present?
So far, we have.
I saw Reed's, I saw Steve Jester's.
Yeah.
There's one I'm.
We have Reed Hillman, James Waddick, John Weaver, Eric Gaspian, Steve Chidester. There's a few new ones I came in, so I printed them out. Oh, okay. Sure.
I'd say we should read resumes and come to a consensus without interviewing people, right? I mean, I don't see any need to.
Yeah, the 7th is Friday at noon, they have to be in by. Thank you. Reed, John Weaver, Eric Gaster, Steve, Chidester, and this is a new one, Lisa Bowden. So, does the board want to interview?
I don't, I don't see any need to interview people. I think you can surmise most of what you're going to figure out from their resume they submitted, who you think is best.
That's up to the board. Chase, how do you feel?
I mean, I'm torn. I know a lot of people, I know a lot of names on this list, so to me, I don't necessarily have to interview, but if someone puts the time in to put their resume in, I mean.
If they want to come in, we could leave it, you know.
Yeah, Jamie, how do you feel?
Up to them.
Yeah, I think Mary's right. I think if people, most of these folks, we all kind of know who they are, can kind of surmise on, but if they want to chat with us, I'm fine with it.
I mean, we wouldn't want to be in a position where we did it because that person we knew the most, was the most popular, you know what I mean?
Right, I guess.
So, I feel like if they would, you know, we can say on this particular day, meeting, we are, please feel free to come in and talk about it if you want to, but if they don't want to, they don't have to.
No.
I like to leave it up to them.
Is this a point on our next meeting? Are we going to do this at the next meeting, on the 17th or whatever?
What date?
Seventeen, the 17th.
The next meeting would be the 18th, because the 17th is a holiday.
That's right.
No, I was, I only did it when Leon left that one time, has it been the board's practice to always interview, or have you done both?
I've been around so many, I forget.
Yeah.
And so many other searches. Well, no, I don't think Mary's idea is bad, you know, we can set up a time on a certain date, even at our next meeting, we could start early.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe come at 5.
And if they want to come in. I do want to caution, though, that we do know these people, and we do want a, what I consider a broad base, because right away, two of these people happen to serve on the same committee, which I don't consider would be, which.
Oh, Eric and Steve.
Yeah, you know.
Eric and Steve.
So do you want to do it that way?
Yeah.
And I don't know one gentleman personally, so.
Yeah, I think if we came in early on our next meeting, you know, maybe offered 10 minutes to each resident, or, you know, something not under the microscope, but got to know them a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. How's that sound to you, Jamie?
Oh, it makes perfect sense.
Mary?
Yep, I'd like to give them the option to come in.
Plus, we may get more between now and Friday noontime.
Yeah.
MLK Day.
Well, you, I just want to throw it out, I guess it sounds like you would prefer to wait till the 18th, I was just going to throw out whether you'd want to have a meeting on the 10th, just to expedite the process and save a week.
You know, I think it'd be nice to get back to a bi-weekly schedule. I'm being a little flip, but it's also, you know, it's going to be the 7th, and then we're not sure how many candidates we're even going to have, and then it's, how much time are we going to allot? We might even have to change it up at that meeting, because we all of a sudden got to double the amount of candidates, we're not sure how much time to allot, so.
And I forgot about MLK Day on the Monday, so I just had to shift my schedule for the following week anyway, so.
Yeah, I was being flip with my first comment, but I.
Yeah, no, we've set up special meetings before, but I don't think this would give us that much time. I think we can do it on the 17th, maybe.
Okay.
We can interview them, we can even make a decision.
Do you want to take a start, do you want to do a start time now? I mean, do we want to decide, do we want to come at 5:30? Do we want to come at, where do we want to start to do that?
Well, why don't we do it this way? Why don't, why don't we give 10 minutes to each, each. Why don't, why don't we give 10 minutes to each, each candidate, depending on how many we get from now till Thursday, right? So right now, we have five, so we'd start at, you know, 5:30, right? But if we get four more, we're going to want to start at five.
Yeah, but let me, can I throw in a wrinkle?
Yeah.
I think that some of these people might not be able to make it as early, like, I, I serve with Lisa Bowden on special events, she's also, was kind of the brainchild for the farmer's market, for example. I don't, you know, I know she commutes to work, for example. I don't know these other people. So I'm not sure everybody who commutes can make it as early as 5:30.
Well, you can do it on the back end, too.
Yeah, I think that we shouldn't interview them any earlier than 6:30. I don't think they should have to leave work in order to try to come here to, I don't know, I mean, I don't know John Weaver, if he, you know, looks like works out of Worcester. I just think that's very early to start a meeting 5:30, when people work, personally.
Well, okay, why don't we just wait until we get the?
We can have our meeting start at 5:30, put in the interviews at 6:30, because I can make it at 5:30. I'm just saying.
If I go to midnight, it doesn't bother me, it's everybody else's.
Yeah, no, we've done that before. So we can do our main meeting, the onset, and do interviews on the tail end. And we can even, you know, we can make our decision that night.
Yeah.
Why don't we have such? Oh, God. James, nice, okay. So we're all set on that? Okay, so did anybody else have any other old slash new? Okay, Mary, you wanted something on your new?
Sorry, oh, well, this was old business with COVID. Is that, this really isn't new business.
No, same difference.
Okay. So I just wanted to kind of maybe turn it over to Bob, but like, you had given a recommendation about masks, and I know a couple of months ago, I had made a motion and it was kind of a split vote, but we didn't do it. But now with the numbers so high, I wondered if the board has had time to reconsider the mask mandate, or not man, well, yeah, it would be a mask mandate, and the suggestion by Bob that we, I mean, some towns are actually going remote, they're disclosing their offices. And I feel like, you know, it's a very minimal safety to at least require masks, you know, regardless of vaccination status. Most establishments are now having that, whether you've been vaccinated or not, and we've had outbreaks. And I think, I read on the news that the positivity rate in Massachusetts right now is just shy of 20%. It's like 19.9%, which is really high, so.
Well, we, there was some concern about this last week because of the number of people, employees in different departments, not just this building, who've tested positive. I mean, I was in one town in '20 when, you know, everything was shut down, and we still didn't see this kind of positivity rate. We still didn't see town employees, you know, not testing positive and not coming in, and we're seeing that now. There was a memo that went out from Auburn to a number of different managers asking what they were doing. I would say about half of them are closing town buildings. I don't know whether the board considers that overreacting, but at least those who are not closing town buildings are having a mask mandate. I would say that none of them who responded didn't at least have a mask mandate for town buildings, not townwide, but for town buildings.
I don't have any problem with mandating masks. I'm not in favor this time of closing down, but I would favor mandating masks.
Yeah, I tend to agree, and I would also say, as long as people, and I think, I think this was Jeff's policy, and I would expect it to be, as long as people, when they can work remotely, if they, that's what they feel more safely or not feeling well, you know, as long as we're flexible.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So we'll have to change sides. How's the rest of the board feel?
Is this, is this going to be a couple-week thing, a two-week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
Try it, renew it. Mary, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. You want to do it through January or just two weeks?
We'll start with two weeks.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we institute a mask mandate in all town offices, whether fully vaccinated or not, for a two-week period commencing today, January 3rd, and ending January 17th, to be reconsidered at that time.
Do you want to do it through the 18th, so it runs into our next meeting?
Okay.
So we can renew it?
I do.
Yeah.
Till the 18th of January.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion, all in favor? Yeah, no, 17th is Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Right. And I know, I just want to, as a follow-up, I know you said the Council on Aging Director, and you said Leslie was looking for some guidance.
Well, I was just going to, sorry, I was just going to bring that up.
Maybe, maybe something, a different policy for the senior center, so.
Bob is.
Okay, go ahead.
Information on that.
Yeah, when I was in Barbara's office, we spoke with Leslie, she was looking for some guidance. Subsequently, we have an email from them, and she's saying that beginning tomorrow, they're going to be closing, postponing all programs until January 18th.
Okay, good.
And I think that the, my understanding is that the library is not having any programs. I think they're open, people come in and take books out and go through the stacks, but they're not having any, any program.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. Like, I know our son, who was, went in person to his firm, they closed until the 18th, just because the post-holiday gatherings, you know, our numbers are higher because we just had New Year's and Christmas, and it should hopefully go down after two weeks.
So your mask schedule would be in line with that, what that's worth?
Right, right.
Kate, did you have anything else for us, Bob?
No, I would only say that everybody here has been extremely helpful. I was joking a little earlier about falling farther and farther behind, but I guess that's not a joke, trying to catch up on things, but, but Jean has been great, Michelle has been great, so I'm looking to hopefully get up to speed. There's, there's a lot going on at Sturbridge.
Oh, yeah? You could say that.
Yeah.
Kate, does anyone else on the board have anything? Kate, is there a motion then to adjourn no citizens, so?
The only thing I noticed, no minutes. We're missing minutes from?
No. I was out.
Okay, I just, I just, I just noticed, this is from the regulator, that's all, so all right.
That's our last meeting, was what, seven minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going record time the last couple.
Trying to keep up with the planning board, they go, boy, boy.
I do have one happy announcement. I just got, I texted somebody, but they just came back. The road race that we held for, to benefit the veterans on Home of the Brave, brought in approximately $6,000, $6,200, and it's going to the Veterans Agent to disperse to a vet. I don't know who, I don't know what process he set up, but we did raise quite a bit of money in that race, so.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, motion then?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. It's not too bad. Bob, do you know how to close the door?
Of course, no worries.
The downstairs one?
Oh, you mean you set the alarm?